Now we'll call it to order. Okay, and please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we will note that our colleagues from the City Council are present. Member Julie Pierce will not be here tonight, she's off on another matter, as and Council Member Dave Shuey will be here shortly, he is making the trek from Oakland. All right, we have the first item on the agenda, and that's the Consent Calendar.
I move approval.
Second.
And it's been moved and approved to, moved and seconded to approve the Consent Calendar, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, so ordered. All right, we'll now move into Recognizations and Presentations, and the first thing we have up on the docket is a report from our Planning Commissioner, and we have Commissioner William Gahl with us tonight, who's probably the first time you've reported to the Council, I believe. Welcome, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. Council members?
You're on.
Okay, thank you. Just a small agenda, if you will, our Planning Commission meeting was held last Tuesday, and we are now in the process of, or the city, rather, is now in the process of advertising, if you will, for a new Commissioner, and that was occasioned by Council Member Tuya. We miss you, and we're going to miss you very much.
Thank you.
She was such a tremendous part of our Council, or our Commission, but we'll struggle to get along without you. The last Tuesday's meeting, because Tuya was not only our Council or Commissioner, but she was our Vice Chair, so Carl Wolf, C.W. Wolf, was selected as the Vice Chair for the Commission, and I believe the applications for a new Commissioner are due by 5:00 PM on January 12th, and hopefully we'll have a new Commissioner Board soon after that. Two items on the agenda that were pretty forthcoming, one was a request for a one-year extension of a previously approved use permit to allow the installation and operation of a wireless communication center facility on the north side of Marsh Creek Road, near the intersection of Marsh Creek Road and Diablo Parkway, and this is on property owned by the Contra Costa Water District. T-Mobile is the requester, and the reason they requested the extension was so that they could complete a lease with the CCW, so that was approved. The second one had to do with a one-year extension for the Creekside Terrace Development Plan and the vesting tentative map from January 16th, or excuse me, January 6th to January 6th of 18. And this is the property that's located pretty much right across the street from Endeavor Hall. I've seen the sketches and plans, and perhaps you have too, Julie, or Tuya, and beautiful facility, and city, of course, I know I'm speaking to the choir, but, you know, we're looking for a developer to complete that project, so this just moves it along for another year for the process. And that's all I have.
Any questions, Mr. Gahl?
Very good, thank you.
Bill, thank you very much for your initial report.
Good seeing you all.
Thank you. One thing I did skip over was there are no Recognizations or Presentations, that was item four, so back now to the reports, no trails or landscaping committee meetings, and now to the City Manager and staff.
Thank you, Mayor Diaz, members of the Council, just a couple items, first off, to piggyback on Commissioner Gahl's report, there is that Planning Commissioner vacancy, that term is for an unexpired term by Council Member Catalano, so it would go through June 30th of 2017. We do encourage, the only, we encourage people to apply, the only requirement is that you live within Clayton, and in order to be, you know, considered on that. The applications are due on January 12th by 5:00 o'clock, and individuals interested who submit an application will be interviewed on January 17th by the entire City Council before the meeting that night. Secondly, the reins are upon us, and just a reminder to yourselves, as well as our community, that our Maintenance Department has deposited sand over by the Keller Ranch House, individuals are welcome to, within reason, don't haul away the entire sand pile, but they can fill up and get sandbags at the Maintenance Yard should they experience some local flooding on their property, and there's no cost to do that, that's funded by the taxpayers. And finally, just a little bit of information, received today in an email, that the League of California Cities had information regarding sales and use tax revenues, and I was curious because the League of California Cities reported that the average city in California has sales and use tax revenues that equal about 30% of their general fund budget, and in some cases up to 45% of their general fund budget. So I asked our Finance Manager to compute the amount of sales tax revenue that the City of Clayton receives on an annual basis, and it amounts to a whopping 8.5% of our general fund budget. So this, the relativity of that is not new to members of the Council, if the citizens step back and think about that particular statistic, it certainly is, makes sense because Clayton is not awash in auto dealerships and commercial establishments, it's more of a neighborhood-type shopping. But what that does mean, as you all know, is that we rely heavily upon our local share of the property tax bill that everyone just recently paid, or hopefully they did.
Great.
And that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move now to City Council reports for various organizations, regional committees and Commissions, start off with Vice Mayor Keith Hayden.
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of slows down at the end of the year, I did attend one meeting since our last Council meeting, and that was the Habitat Conservancy Executive Board Meeting in Brentwood, and we got a nice update from the staff on a variety of projects that the Habitat is working on, and again, to remind folks, that's the organization that is responsible for managing many of the open space areas that have been designated for protection throughout eastern end of Contra Costa County, and so they do a good job of managing that, and in trying to enlarge that where possible when lands become available to protect for future generations, open space. And then just attended a bunch of private Christmas parties, but in preparation now, getting ready for next year, so.
Great, thank you. Council Member Catalano?
I don't actually have anything to report, so.
All right, thank you. A few things that I was involved in, again, as Vice Chair, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Hayden mentioned, there were a number of end-of-season events which I attended, first the East Bay Division of the League of California Cities meeting on the 8th of December. On the 12th of December was a rather interesting evening, it's the annual tree lighting down at John Muir Hospital, the Concord Campus by the hospice of the East Bay. It also was their 30th anniversary of providing services, very needed services, to the entire area, and it was a well-attended event, and both the City of Concord and the City of Clayton were there to honor them and to make announcements relative to that. On the 14th, I attended an end-of-season event with Supervisor Karen Mitchoff and her staff, and then on the 15th, attended the County Connection Board Meeting, which we received an update report, one of the new services that the County Connection is offering is electric trolleys in the area of Walnut Creek, which are getting more and more used, and it's a very useful and well-used service, so that, when you're over in Walnut Creek and you see that green bus running around on their trolley, that's what it is, it's a product of the County Connection. That concludes that, and there's no other reports, we'll now move into the public comment on no, or excuse me, non-agenda items, and I have a couple of cards here, and the first one is Dylan Kupch.
Cups.
Is it Cups?
Cup.
Thank you.
Right here. Thank you for taking my comment. So I am here to talk about inequality and the struggling fact truth that we have in our economy. So right now, the United States has a second level of high, of income inequality, only ahead of Chile, and currently in the City of Clayton, there's 18% of the people below poverty line. I think that we can do a lot better in our, in our coming together as a city in imposing an inequality tax that Portland, like Portland did. Portland imposed a tax on large corporations that had the CEO who made 100 times the American worker, they imposed an additional surtax of 10%, and it generated a lot of revenue for the city in order to use in public projects. Currently in the U.S., CEOs make 325 times the amount of money times the average worker. It has actually gone up a lot, and CEO compensation has increased 300% since 1990. We can help the small businesses in our community do better and actually compete with different large Fortune 500 companies by incorporating this inequality tax. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have another card, and this is from Max Khan.
Max Khan.
Again, you have three minutes, and you're on.
Thank you. So I'd like to reiterate and echo the sentiment of Comrade Dylan Kupch. Our nation is plagued by egregious levels of income inequality, specifically in the Bay Area, San Francisco is a, or is a perfect encapsulation of that, but as Dylan noted, there are many people who live below the poverty line in the City of Clayton, and so I believe that it is imperative that the city act in any way that it can in order to reduce and curtail the egregious gap between the haves and the haves-nots in our society. It is an American value, the American value is equitability, and I believe that, as Comrade Kupch stated, the, an equality tax such as what was levied by the Portland City Council would be a prudent solution to that matter. I think that additionally, our own Congressman, Representative DeSaucon, he proposed a similar measure when he was in the California State Senate, with a wage scale of, or in which a corporate, corporate tax would be imposed on any income for an executive that exceeded 100 times the median salary of a worker, and so I think that, I'd like to applaud Representative DeSaucon, he's proposed a similar member of the House, and so I think that the City of Clayton should take any action necessary in order to curtail the grotesque level of income inequality. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that, with no other individual would like to address the Council on any matter that is not on the agenda, you may please step forward, if not, we will close that portion of the agenda, and now move on to the public hearings, beginning with item 7A, which is a public hearing to consider the adoption of Urgency Ordinance Number 473 to prohibit outdoor cultivation of recrea, I can't even speak tonight, recreational marijuana plants, and discussion of various local policy issues arising from the California Voters' passage of Proposition 64 regarding local regulation on recreational marijuana. Community Director Mindy.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This item on the agenda pertains to issues and implications locally following the passage of Proposition 64, which is also known as the Regulate, Control, and Tax Adult Use of Marijuana Act, more simply AMA. Staff is recommending an urgency ordinance to ban outdoor cultivation of marijuana for personal use, and is looking for direction from the Council on several policy issues arising out of the passage of Proposition 64. First, I'm going to provide a quick overview of the current legality of marijuana from a federal, state, and local level, as well as an overview of Proposition 64 before we get into some of the policy issues. So federal law, in 1970, Congress passed the Controlled Substances Act, which classified marijuana as a Schedule I narcotic, with basically defining it as no acceptable medical use with a high potential for abuse, as well as making it illegal to possess, use, manufacture, distribute of marijuana. And in 2013, the Department of Justice issued the COE memo, which outlined guidance on the enforcement of marijuana. The memo essentially conveys that states that have legalized marijuana should have a robust regulatory system and enforcement system in place, and those states that have those regulations essentially would be a waste of federal resources to pursue them, even though marijuana is still illegal on the federal level. So also, let me highlight, this, the COE memo was actually issued under the Obama Administration, and with the new administration taking office on January 20th, this could potentially change, so it's kind of a wait and see, to see if there's going to be any further changes or guidance on this issue from the federal level. Moving to state law, in 1996, the voters passed Proposition 215, which was also known as the Compassionate Care Act. This allowed patients and caregivers, essentially exception from criminal laws, which would have otherwise prohibited possession or the cultivation of marijuana. And in 2015, the state passed legislation composed of three bills, which licensed the commercial cultivation, the manufacture, retail, sale, transportation, distribution, and delivery of medical marijuana. However, this bill is relatively new, went into place in January 1st of this year, and no licenses will be issued until January 18th. And then locally here in Clayton, the municipal code, mainly the language pertains to medical marijuana, and is silent on recreational marijuana. The code does prohibit the outdoor cultivation of medicinal marijuana, as well as prohibits dispensaries and testing facilities, however, it does allow for the limited indoor cultivation for qualified patients and caregivers, and also allows for deliveries due to concerns regarding access for patients. Proposition 64 was passed by the voters on November 8th with a 57% majority in favor, and here locally in Clayton, it was favorably passed with 53.8% of the vote in favor of Proposition 64. This proposition legalized immediately the transportation, possession, purchase, and transfer of marijuana for those 21 years of age or older. While part of these regulations went immediately into effect, there will be no commercial licenses actually issued until January 1st of 2018, however, it did allow for the immediate personal use as well as cultivation. It allows for individuals to carry up to 28.5 grams of marijuana, or up to eight grams of marijuana concentrate, as well as cultivate up to six plants for personal use. Proposition 64 does allow for local control over recreational marijuana uses, local jurisdictions can ban all marijuana-related businesses, such as dispensaries, delivery services, and any retail services as well. Local jurisdictions can also ban the outdoor cultivation of marijuana, and in addition, can reasonably regulate the indoor cultivation in private residences, however, cannot ban it outright. So the first issue for consideration is the indoor and outdoor cultivation of marijuana for personal use. Staff is recommending adoption of an urgency ordinance to ban the outdoor cultivation of marijuana due to concerns of the plants being viewed from public areas, and easily accessible by the public, including youth and children, also the attraction of those looking to steal marijuana, the odorous nature of the plants, the potential for broader growth due to a larger space, as well as the plants being less secure. Further, the Council's previous direction has been the prohibition of outdoor cultivation of medical marijuana. These concerns raise an immediate threat to the public health, safety, and welfare in the city due to the negative effects created by the outdoor cultivation of marijuana. While AMA allows for the prohibition of outdoor cultivation, local jurisdictions cannot prohibit the indoor cultivation, can, however, but can reasonably regulate. So the policy questions for the Council to consider is, does the City Council wish to reasonably regulate the indoor cultivation of marijuana? These regulations could range from a robust permitting system, including inspections by code enforcement, to a registration requirement, or no requirements beyond state law. The next issue up for consideration pertains to the indoor and outdoor commercial cultivation of marijuana. Proposition 64 established a regulatory framework for commercial recreational marijuana operations, including cultivations, and local jurisdictions can choose whether to allow these uses or not. And so the policy questions tonight are, does the City Council wish to allow the indoor or outdoor cultivation, commercial cultivation of marijuana, and if the Council allows commercial cultivation, how does the Council foresee regulating these activities? These regulations could include a permitting process, security measures, land use applications, and/or codified restrictions on locations and operating procedures. Up next is commercial marijuana activities, so Proposition 64 allows for a variety of recreational marijuana retail uses and services, which will be forthcoming. These commercial activities include the delivery, dispensaries, testing, manufacturing, and the retail component. The city can choose to ban or allow some of these commercial activities. So the policy questions for Council consideration pertaining to commercial marijuana activities is to allow or prohibit them, and this includes deliveries as well. If the Council would like to allow commercial marijuana activities, identify which ones. If the Council allows commercial marijuana activities, how would the Council like to regulate these activities? And if the Council allows commercial marijuana activities, does the Council want to explore fees and taxes associated with these uses? And the last policy question is the regulation of personal marijuana use locations. So the city can no longer ban the use of marijuana by an individual in their own home, however, Proposition 64 does not allow for the use of marijuana in public, but a public place is not clearly defined. Further, Clayton's smoking regulations do not include marijuana. The City Council may also want to consider expanding the smoking ordinance to prohibit the smoking of marijuana in quasi-public locations such as front yards, parking lots, and shopping centers. And so the policy questions for this component would be, does the City Council wish to modify the smoking ordinance to include marijuana, and does the City Council wish to limit the scope of allowable smoking locations? So other issues that the Council may want to consider would be possibly delaying their direction to see if legal interpretations change over time, considering this is relatively new legislation, or the Council may want to see what neighboring jurisdictions are going to adopt. For example, if the City of Concord allows for commercial marijuana activities to occur within their jurisdictions, this could possibly negatively affect the city with those uses, however, the city wouldn't see any revenue associated with those uses to help combat those negative effects. The City Council can also choose not to adopt, these are other options, would be to not adopt the urgency ordinance, however, if the Council does this, the question arises whether or not the prohibition on the outdoor cultivation of medical marijuana should still be in place. And then alternatively, the Council could consider a temporary moratorium on the outdoor cultivation and direct staff to explore possible regulations to regulate that activity. So staff is recommending, the City Council motion to have the City Clerk read Ordinance Number 473 by title and number only, and waive further reading. Then secondly, motion to approve Ordinance Number 473 to prohibit the outdoor cultivation of marijuana for personal use, and lastly, to provide direction to staff regarding the proposed policy questions. Also, there's a memo on the dais tonight, in the drafting of the original ordinance that accompanied the staff report, there was language in Section 4 that was actually outdated language from the municipal code, that language has been updated to reflect the Council's direction from back in March of 2016, and so that has been revised and placed on the dais for consideration. And with that, I'd happy to be answering any questions that the Council might have.
Thank you, Director Gentry. This is a public hearing item, so I'm going to open now for any public comment on this matter, and if so, would you please come forward, state your name?
Dylan Kupch.
And so I would recommend to the Council not to regulate indoor cultivation of marijuana as it is private property, and the government should have no interference within private property of somebody's house, and it doesn't, and it won't really affect anybody with the smell or different aspects when it's indoors and on somebody's property and pretty much out of sight, so I recommend that the City Council does not regulate marijuana indoors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience wish to address this item, please state your name?
Max Khan. Yes, I, once again echoing the statements of Comrade Kupch, I believe that the City of Clayton should take robust action against the drug war, the mythical war of drugs, the war on drugs, and so I think that it would be obscene to regulate indoor cultivation of marijuana. Our prisons are already packed as they are, and the police force and the city, or city resources could be better, or better spent uplifting human beings who are struggling just to get by, and not imprisoning individuals for making a personal choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and now allow for some question and answer discussion from the City Council.
I'll start. Yes. I agree, it's maybe not obscene, but I don't think we need to regulate inside the House. I have no problem with the emergency, or the urgency ordinance, and I think we need to adopt that, but as to policy direction on the other stuff, I don't think we need to regulate inside, and I also think that, you know, smoking marijuana should be incorporated into the same smoking issues as regular smoking, if you're prohibited from regular cigarettes, you're prohibited from marijuana cigarettes. So, you know, I think, I think, I have no problem with the urgency ordinance, I agree with the speakers, and that we don't need to regulate it inside the House, and policy direction, let's keep it the same as smoking.
Thank you. Keith?
Well, I agree with the urgency ordinance prohibiting the personal use and outdoor cultivation for personal use, and this is focused on outdoor cultivation, which would continue to allow then indoor cultivation. I do see the need to move on that rather quickly before people begin planning outdoor marijuana for their personal use, which would appear to be authorized unless we take action. As far as the other issues we're facing, I'm a little concerned if we try to track closely with the smoking prohibitions, because I can envision workers who are required to go outside to smoke, and go outside, people, patrons of bars and restaurants, being forced to go outside the restaurant, but being allowed to smoke on the sidewalk, and I'm a little hesitant to authorize the smoking of marijuana in the same areas where normal smoking is allowed. I'm viewing the prohibition against alcohol consumption as probably a better ordinance to follow, for example, alcohol is not consumed out in public, on public streets, you're not allowed to walk around with open containers unless you have an authorized event that has a special license. I don't want to see necessarily authorizing people walking up and down our main street in the same areas where they could smoke a cigarette, smoking marijuana for their personal use. I'm a little concerned about authorizing that, I think this requires additional discussion and research. This is a brand-new law that's just been passed authorizing this, so I think it is up to cities to begin to serious- So, I think it is up to cities to begin to ser- seriously consider where that use should be authorized and prohibited. But that's my initial thoughts on where, how we could approach it and what we could look to as possible examples.
Can I ask a couple clarifying questions of staff? So, I do have one question. So, in terms of the, so if you wanted to do a commercial sale, I mean, it sounds like you do need a license from the state, and the state's not going to issue those licenses until January 2018. So, in the entering, I'm wondering sort of what happens, in other words, in terms of commercial sales? I mean, I think our city does not allow any medical dispensaries, but there are other cities that do allow those. So, do those medical dispensaries, are they allowed to do the recreational sales? Or, does it just simply mean that before January 2018, there are simply no recreational sales anywhere?
Correct. So, currently as it stands, Proposition 64 left the Medical Marijuana Act essentially in place. And those that are dispensing medical marijuana can continue to do so under the, because they're, they don't even have licenses from the state yet either. And those will be issued also starting, which, in January of 2018 as well. And currently, there is a ban on dispensaries within the city of Clayton. So, if somebody were wanting to come in to establish, you know, prior to, to try to get a business license, or, you know, to cultivate or retail sales or any of the commercial activities, the city can still rely upon the existing municipal code language that states it's still against federal law and can rely upon that saying that you don't have your state license yet, therefore, we're not going to issue you a business license.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And then, the other question I had is, so, the state act of Proposition 64, it does allow local governments to do some regulation, regardless of what that is. In terms of the cities enacting any such regulation, even if it is just regulating outdoor cultivation, does, does that regulation need to be based on some findings in health and safety? Or, is there sort of a free range as to what you can regulate?
Pertaining to the outdoor, outdoor cultivation.
Or anything, you know? Because I think the, I think the AUMA provides sort of, you know, just allows the cities to do certain types of regulation.
I'm going to defer to the city attorney on that aspect.
I don't know if I'm on. Yeah. Thank you. So, two parts. Number one, the city is authorized to regulate or ban outdoor cultivation of personal marijuana use, or personal marijuana. And if we opt to ban it, that's fine. If we opt to regulate it in some fashion, then it would be a land use decision, and we would apply the same land use principles for regulating various land uses that we do to any other proposed use. So, they couldn't be arbitrary or capricious. They would have to have a legitimate governmental purpose. Those same governing principles would apply there.
Okay, very good. So, so I think, you know, from my perspective, I'm certainly in favor of the outdoor cultivation ban and the urgency ordinance in that regard as well. I think that whole issue has a lot of sort of potential impacts that I don't think we're prepared to deal with in terms of security and otherwise. In terms of the other items, I mean, I think it sounds like a lot of other cities will be, will be looking at this issue during the course of 2017, and I think we probably should as well. At least with respect to, for example, the commercial sale and recreational, do we allow that in our town? I don't know the answer to that yet, but I think those are something that I think we would want to look at at a later time. But certainly in favor of the urgency ordinance right now for the outdoor cultivation.
Great, thank you. And I too concur with the urgency ordinance that we, we act on that and that the, I share my colleague's opinion relative to the outdoor use of it especially. I mean, obviously, we do, wouldn't, wouldn't want to intrude upon the, the home use of it within the home, but like the use of alcohol, having it openly used on the street, I think I would not, I definitely would not be in favor of that. And I agree also that we need to hold off and to see what develops. I, I know that a couple of the communities have already authorized some commercial uses, and it's presented a few problems. Number one is since it is a federally illegal matter, the businesses tend to operate in cash only, and the banks are not receptive to take that money in because it jeopardizes potentially their FDIC standing. So, then, it presents a problem on disposing of the revenue from it. So, I think we need to take a, a look at that and just hold back on that, that portion of the commercial establishment of, and see what, what develops. Because I think the state law, it's still in its infancy, and there still needs to be some further developments on that. Any other comments from the staff before we take action on this? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, the only item tonight that requires your immediate attention is to determine the fate of the urgency ordinance. And it seemed to staff to make sense that since there already is in place an outdoor ban to cultivate marijuana for medicinal purposes, it would make sense to do so for personal use because it'd be difficult for a police officer to identify which plant was for which purpose.
Excuse me.
Or it was planted. And people aren't, not going to be inclined to tag the plant and saying, this one is for personal use. The rest of the items can certainly wait, as well as for the return of the fifth council member to discuss some of those policy issues. One of the things to keep in mind, however, in looking at some of the similar parity between what the council has acted on for the medicinal marijuana aspects, you'll recall that you have allowed the delivery of medicinal marijuana. And would you consider the same for the commercial aspect of it also? But other than that, the, the post pressing item in summation is the urgency ordinance tonight. And we've received some, some, you know, snippets of information regarding some of your thinking. If you have any other input on some of the other policy questions, we would certainly receive those, or we can bring those back at another time in January, February for your deliberation.
Great. What's the?
Sounds like there's consensus that we would like to adopt the urgency ordinance. So, I move that we have the city clerk read the urgency ordinance number 473 by title and number only and waive further reading.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to act on what my good vice mayor has just stated. And so, we'll turn it over to the, first of all, all who signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. And I think I heard that the ordinance to be read is the one that was amended and benched tonight. I think I heard that.
You did.
Yes.
Great hearing.
Glad that reached over there.
Ordinance number 473, an urgency ordinance of the city of Clayton, of the city council of the city of Clayton, California enacted pursuant to California Government Code Section 36937, establishing a prohibition on the outdoor cultivation of marijuana for personal use.
Thank you. Now that we've had that, we take a motion.
Step two then would be to make a motion that the council adopt urgency ordinance 473 to prohibit the personal use of outdoor cultivation of marijuana.
Second. It's moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 473 to prohibit the outdoor cultivation and use of marijuana of personal use. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all who signify support by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? So ordered. Thank you. We'll close the public hearing, and we move to item number eight A, the action items, which is first to consider, the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 471, amending the Clayton zoning map for agricultural District A to Plan Development District for 2.77 acres that comprise the St. John's Church-Southbrook Drive Mixed Use Plan Development Project.
Thank you.
Ms. Gentry.
Thank you again. This ordinance was introduced at the city council's hearing in meeting December 6th. There were no changes to the subject ordinance, which would rezone the St. John's Episcopal Church-Southbrook Drive parcel from agricultural district to plan development district. And with that, just as a quick review, it was the approval of a general plan amendment, a rezone, and two, a lot split, creating two lots for, three total lots, but two lots for two new single-family homes. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
I think our questions were answered at the last council meeting. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, I will open it up for any comment from the general public on this item, 8A. Anybody wishing to speak and address the council on it? Will you step forward and state your name? Oh, come on, guys, this is obscene. Seeing nobody stepping forward, we will close the action item for the public comment and move back up here to the council for action.
Well, I was pleased and support the final issues being resolved at the last.
Right.
The ones we were concerned about were satisfactorily handled. And with that, I think the entire development is properly planned, will be a good asset to the neighborhood and to Clayton itself. And if the council agrees.
So, you had a motion then?
I will move that the city clerk read ordinance 471 by title and number only and waive further reading.
Second. Moved and seconded for the city clerk to read the ordinance number 471 by title and number only. And any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance number 471, an ordinance of the Clayton City Council amending the Clayton zoning map from agricultural District A to Plan Development District PD for 2.77 acres that comprise the St. John's Church-Southbrook Drive Mixed Use Plan Development Project.
Thank you. Now, we have an action item to adopt ordinance number 471.
All right, all right. I move that the council adopt by motion the city ordinance number 471 rezoning St. John's Episcopal Church-Southbrook Drive Mixed Use Plan Development Project site, changing it from agricultural District A to Plan Development District PD.
Second. And it's moved and seconded.
Mr. Vice Mayor, would you read also the sequel finding, please? It's in the agenda, just so we have it on record. Thank you.
All right, here. With the finding. And, let's see, with the finding that the project will not have a significant effect on the environment, as outlined in the city council, adopted St. John's Church-Southbrook Drive Mixed Use Plan Development Project final initial study mitigated negative debt.
Thank you. I thought I heard him say that when I seconded it.
Thank you for the reminder.
We're hearing very well.
All right, good.
All right, it's moved and seconded as so read. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all signify by saying, support by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And it's ordered. Item 8A. Now, item 8B.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Thank you, if I might. We actually let representatives know, we thought you might reach this about eight o'clock tonight, and you're eager to get home. So, I don't, I don't know if Kevin, Mr. Durn is going to show up tonight, but my staff member is not here at the moment to, oh, did he come in? Oh, yeah, he is. He's here. Oh, that's what you're saying. Never mind. You did not hear that at all. Go ahead.
And, and let me just preface it while you come up, that I shared this, and I know Gary had shared the preliminary report with CVLL. And we had a board meeting that same night. And from CVLL's standpoint, it's cost prohibitive the way it is now. So, we're, they're withdrawing the request because it, the way it's portrayed, we just can't, the CVLL can't afford that. So, you can do an abbreviated, I mean, I, I think it was a great report, and I think it was something that we, it was good to have. And Little League is going to take that under advisement because if we really, you know, cannot move forward in other areas with potential permanent location, we may want to do that. This gives us the framework, but our season is basically starting, you know, we have tryouts starting in January, and our budgeting is already set. So, this was much more than Little League hoped. But, and I also just want to say that Little League is always appreciative of all the work that you do and staff does. It has been a great relationship, and, you know, they're, we're bummed that we can't get it done, but we understand there's a lot more involved. And so, you know, that's where we're at. Okay. How do you want me to proceed?
There's no reason to, to give the report. I assume that Councilmember Shuey, that includes the storage shed as well?
The storage shed at this point is, is something that we'll have to figure out because they, they did not, we did not specifically address that. We looked at the cost of the fencing and everything. But, the, Kevin Durn didn't have a chance to look at all the other aspects of the shed. We are trying to work with alternative sites for the shed for this year on an emergency basis.
Okay, well, thank you for that input, Mr. Mayor. Just let you know that I don't think there's a reason for staff to give its report. But at least, if Councilmember Shuey could go back, I, I think from at least a staff perspective, we're interested in, in if there is some cost sharing or portions of cost sharing, because we think actually in some respects, updating the fields would be a good idea in the long run. Secondarily, I received input tonight from All Out Sports League, and they said they didn't have an opinion on the field, you know, difference. But where their largest concern was, was getting the field into better shape because of the gophers and the ground squirrels.
And, and Little League remains committed to working with the city to, you know, collaborate on doing that with some of our volunteer labor, if we can assist in that way, and, you know, potential monetary contribution. So, that's something that going forward, actually, the president said he's, we've got to touch base with you guys on when we can get on the fields. And that can kind of probably loop in with the other stuff. So, this, this report is actually very good for Little League. As, as many of you know, Little League, just like a lot of places, we have a lot of turnover. And so, there's about four or five of us that have been on for a long time, but a lot of people turnover. So, the report was shared with the rest of the board, and a lot of it was stuff that they'd never thought about and never, you know, considered. So, that it was a good education for them going forward. And we'll continue to work with, with, you know, maintenance and staff to, to figure out collaborative effort.
Sure.
And I, I wish I had been able to tell you before you got there.
I, I kind of knew, anyway, good evening, Mayor Diaz, members of the council. I kind of knew what I was walking into tonight anyway, because I, I was thinking the same thing, that once, education does wonders at all levels whenever we work with groups, and they tend to look at things, and then when they look back and they see it, they're going, wow, we didn't look at all these things. And, yeah, we're, this is just, you know, as you know, it's education.
Absolutely.
We certainly appreciate the staff report. It certainly gave us a lot of additional information to consider for potential future uses of the property. And if we want to consider upgrading it, we have a lot of good information now.
Yeah, and I do think it was a very useful, you know, use of your time and efforts because it does give us a baseline going forward as we, as Little League tries to figure out what it's doing, because we're still a little bit in flux with the high school and with other potential sites. So, this is, this is good.
When we did, because I looked in research even further, when we, the, the last time we've done anything to that community park as far as field-wise was Field One, and we redid the infield, and that was in 2001. And I got pictures and photos of it, and I actually was going to put them on. But, we did that actually in May and June. So, so as far as renovating fields and stuff like that, we were looking, you know, even back then, we weren't able to do it in the wintertime. We had to do it right after baseball, and then it was ready the next year. So, but, you know.
It's tough.
Thanks.
One of the, just as, Mr. Mayor, if I might, one of the aspects that, you know, from the staff level, however, is irrespective of the infield itself, you may actually see some of the restoration or rehabilitation of the turf areas enter into the capital improvement project. Because I think part of this learning process for us was as well that those fields, the turf, has really not been renovated since the community park fields were put in place. And if there are concerns about player safety that are, you know, being arisen to a level that soccer won't play on it anymore, we need to take a look at doing some major overhaul renovations, not all at once each field, but separately going forward. So, you could very well see this return as a capital improvement item for the turf areas.
Thank you.
I do, yeah, I do want to note too, I mean, I do, do think that's a good idea that this topic came up, and it's a little bit of a shame that I think the, the condition has deteriorated, and I think partly it's just weather and the drought. But, I think the topic overall is a good one to discuss because it's, it sounds like soccer used to, AYSO used to use it at one point, and they don't use those fields anymore. So.
Well, they still use them some.
Some.
But not to the extent.
But it sounds like the use overall has declined over the years.
Well, Little League has increased, and soccer has decreased.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean.
The multi-use.
Yeah, but I think maybe it's a Yeah, but I think maybe it's a topic for another day to discuss overall.
Great. Thanks, John.
Thank you. Thank you, John, for your, your time and effort on this. And I guess then that we just, this, we obey this item, correct?
No action.
No action. All right.
That's it. Thank you. The next item is the, to review the ad hoc committee assignments for the year 2017.
Move approval.
Okay, we won't discuss. There's a motion, anybody wish to second?
As proposed by the mayor, yes?
I move approval as proposed by the mayor, but if people want to talk about it, we can. But I have no problems.
I'm comfortable with that. I would second it.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'm comfortable with what's in those one.
Okay, very good, then.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to allow, for the opportunity for any public comment, please, just before you, you rush to judgment?
One of you. One of you up there.
I mean, they, oh, yeah, right, we do have to have...
There could be outrage expressed.
That's right. I will then open up and withdraw the motion for a second here to open it up to the public to see if there's any comment regarding the assignments for the ad hoc committees and liaisons. No one stepping forward? We will close the public comment period and then move on the item, which we have a motion and a second, and there's no further discussion. All signify support by saying aye. Any opposed? No, and ordered. All right, that concludes all of the agenda items. We do have any future items that may be on the minds of some of our council member representatives? Do we have anything for future council items?
Not at this time.
Nothing? Nothing? Okay. No closed session? So we will adjourn to the January 3rd meeting of 2017. However, that meeting has been canceled, and we will then move on from there to the meeting on July 17th.
January.
January, excuse me.
Wrong way.
I'm sorry.
January 17th.
We actually heard July.
Yeah.
Thank you. That concludes the city council meeting, and I'm going to turn the floor over to Chairman Shuey for the Clayton Successor and Successor Housing Agency.
All right, I'll call to order the Clayton Successor and Successor Housing Agency meeting for December 20th, 2016. Let the record reflect all the present except Ms. Pierce. Consent calendar, do I have a, move approval?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have no public, or is there any member of the public that wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and we have no public hearings or action items. Do I have any board items for next meeting?
Yes, I have a long list here.
Well, that's your Christmas list.
All right, then we will adjourn the Clayton Successor and Successor Housing Agency meeting.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Joe. Happy holidays to everyone.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, staff.